If you're not adding anything to the culture that you claim, you don't deserve to carry its name. This is Brother Hotem coming at you live and you are now listening to the Giyami Journey Radio. Shouts out to the Giyami Tribe, Giyami Family. Stand up. Peace. Two Blake!
My name is Prophet and this is Giyami Journey Radio.
You're now listening to Giyami Journey Radio.
This is Gina.
This is Gina.
And you are now?
Now, we listen to my daddy.
On Giyami?
Gyami Journey.
Radio.
Radio.
Peace.
Peace.
Alright, we about to get started. We're running kinda late because we had to have our business meeting first. So we're gonna apologize to all those people that's been tuning in to us on a regular basis. But it's the second week. We're in our adult study session right now. We passing out the sheets. We're gonna continue with, I think it's called the Third Overstanding. And we on number five, Perform Forgiveness. This time we're gonna break it down and we're gonna talk about each, each chapter. Or each understanding individually and then we're gonna continue on. It's gonna be a quick session because we're running kinda behind. And we know a lot of y'all that are listening, we appreciate you. So we wanna respect your time as well as our time because we all got families and stuff to do. So, anybody wanna read number five, Performance of Forgiveness? Make, remember that you on the radio, so talk up.
Number five, Perform Forgiveness. Guilt is a self-composed. Begin by forgiving yourself for all of your indiscretions. Yes, you do have the power to repent and forgive yourself. Yes, you do have the power to let it go. Hold no grudge, harbor no anger, and release resentment and guilt. Remember, an act that you may have perceived as evil may have turned out to be a blessing in disguise. At the, at the beginning of your spiritual studies, do not judge yourself and/or others, only make observations and learn. Turn away from evil thinking and never return it. Show love and no revenge. Be ready to forgive others by restoring some level of resolve into the relationship. Forgive others just as you would want to be forgiven. Be patient with others as you, be patient with others just as you would want God to be patient with you. This is a divine performance. Give the transgressor a chance to repair the situation. If this is not possible, take steps to assure that the evil act or selfish act will not happen to you again. You'll still perform forgiveness, not resentment, resentment, or revenge. Show love, not hate. Teach, do not judge. Show your spiritual strength through understanding and patience, not through emotion or criticism. Always know that you are working on behalf of God, not yourself. This will help you with the resentment you may feel because of the selfish acts of others. For every selfish act committed against you, your God shall indeed restore you. Work for God, not for yourself or others. Do not ask God to use you as a tool of peace or as a vessel of love if you're not prepared to be stuck into the dirt and the stench of the world itself. Know this, God shall use you to clean up the vomit of the world and to catch its feces. God shall use you to be stuck into the soul of the world as effort to plant new seeds. Is this not the work of our God? Try to remember, the symbolical, you are the tool of God. That is, that is the universe, not you, that is doing the work. You, the teacher and the tool that helps the work get done. Just as we used to, we use tools to go into places that we ourselves cannot go into, so it is with God, God is spirit. And those that commit to their God are like, what of valuable tools in the material world? Indeed, God is an artist, a master builder, a great architect. And we, the teachers, are the tools. When a great architect finds a good tool that is indispensable to the building of the world, that tool is preserved and repaired, cleansed and restored repeatedly for the sake of the work that is necessary to achieve. Eventually, the good tool is set aside and remembered for its faithful service. Are you the tool, teacher, in your environment? And tools are used to go into those difficult and hard-to-reach places of the world. You cannot run high when difficult people and/or situations arise. This is the plumber that refuses to go into a stocked-up toilet or even a hammer that refuses to hit the nail into the wall. Teachers that refuse to teach difficult people in difficult places at difficult times are like broken tools. And if tools break where you cannot be restored, then they are deep, thrown away. You're the representation of your God and your God. Indeed, you may be the only hope in your environment. With every sincere act of forgiveness, you gain another degree in your spiritual development. And it is these degrees that prove your usefulness, strength, and trustworthiness before God. Forgiveness proves your endurance. Take advantage of every evil and/or selfish moment brought before you. Tell the selfish one you are forgiven. Look into the face of those who try to harm you and say, "You are forgiven." Even while the evil or selfishness is occurring, so do your emotions, take advantage of the moment, and tell the evil or selfish one you are forgiven. And really mean it. God is examining your heart to determine your level of spiritual maturity and trustworthiness. Remember your own times of ignorance and/or fear and correct your own past errors by performing. Patience with those who are blind, immature, fearful, confused, or have wronged you today. Learn to forgive yourself and others. Forgiveness leads to freedom and health, while resentment leads to bondage and sickness. Take care of yourself. Heal yourself. Release guilt. Do virtuous living. Turn your own ignorant past into the testimony or ministry for the correction of others today. For no one can minister or teach upon a subject they themselves have no experience with. Instead of feeling guilty for your own past actions, use them as evidence of your wisdom and as evidence of your victory over the world's obstacles. Use your corrected failures as the textbook that you shall teach others from. Allow your corrected errors, corrected errors to qualify your wisdom to teach. These very gospel is a product of your survival. Let the immature thinking of others bounce off you like rain. Do not drink the immaturity of others by responding to their ignorance with more ignorance. In hostile situations, protect yourself first through immediate forgiveness. Never empower the weaknesses of others with resentment or your immediate impulse to act as they did. Be the light in all situations. Once you have performed the act of forgiveness, you can believe that God is sure to fall up with justice. This is a divine performance, for divine performance. Work for God, not for self. For it is selfishness that gives strength to forgiveness. No one can hurt or betray a self that doesn't exist. If you're hurting, it is most likely because you have accepted someone else's immaturity unto yourself. You have allowed the immaturity of others to change your God-like nature. Therefore, do not waste time on revengeful or resentful and angry performances. For with your divine performance, God is sure to close the show. Only seek the help. Even in argument, only seek to correct the ignorance of others. Never argue angrily or resentfully, only teach. Mature hip-hop has never agreed just to prove their point, just as an argument is pointless. Instead, try to learn and truly understand the opposing view. Show respect for the thinking of others. And with a forgiving heart, remind them of their own ignorance for their own sake. Perform forgiveness.
Alright. Perform forgiveness. Any highlights before we move on? Anything that stuck out to anybody?
Be the light in all situations.
Be the light in all situations. Be the light in all situations. Anything else?
Instead of feeling guilty for your own past actions, use them as evidence of your own wisdom and as evidence of your victory over the world's obstacles.
Okay. Alright, I wanna, for me, begin by forgiving yourself. The first sentence, well, second sentence. Begin by forgiving yourself. Now, this is my question. What does it mean to forgive yourself?
Sometimes we are our own worst enemy and, you know, we can be ourselves up more about a situation than somebody else, you know? So, instead of, you know, just taking that like, "Oh, I messed up so bad." Like, you know, that's a reason to quit or give up or, you know, opt out. Usually that's like, "Okay, I messed up. Let me keep it moving." You know, try to keep yourself, keep yourself encouraged.
Anybody else? Forgiving yourself. Man. Cause I know a lot of us in here have been carrying packages for a long time. And in order for us to really to be, be a tool for hip-hop, for SRS, for Giyami Journey, there's some stuff that we got to let go. Cause a lot of times we block our own skills, we block our own gifts because we are holding guilt. Guilt is like a weight. It slows you down. It slows your actions down. You know? Another piece he talked about as being a tool for peace, but then he followed it saying that if you are a tool for peace or as a vessel of love, you are not prepared to be stuck into the dirt. You got to be prepared to be stuck in the dirt and in the stench of the world itself. Know this, God shall use you to clean up the vomit of the world and to catch its feces.
Whoa.
Now, that comes, that comes across strong. But one of the things that I wanna stress about that is this, as much as we don't like shit, shit feeds us. You, I mean, seriously, shit feeds us? You know what I'm saying? It's that, it's a building block. You know what I'm saying? It's that, as they say in the scriptures, the stone that the builder refused, that feces a lot of times allows us, that junk, that garbage allows us to really see what we made of it. But if we holding guilt, you know what I'm saying? It's almost like, if we already holding guilt and somebody else dropped something on us, now we feeling double guilty. So now I can't really get the lesson out of the guilt or out of the stuff that you done dropped off on me because I'm still working through my stuff. You know what I'm saying? Anybody else? Nothing else, nothing else stuck out? That was a good one.
I like the forgiving. I like the forgiving. Look into the face of those who tried to harm you and say, "You were forgiven." Because that's something that I had to say today, you know? Somebody did something to me like, you know, taking it back like over five years ago that, not to say I had that grudge so long, but I was just, basically, our relationship wasn't the same, probably won't be the same. And, you know, I said, I had told somebody today, like, you know, yes, I forgive her. I left her all my life. It's my cousin. I left her all my life, you know what I'm saying? If I don't, how can I expect to be forgiven by somebody else if I don't forgive her? You know what I'm saying? Because... I'm mad at her or not forgiving her. So I'm like, it's things that I wanna be forgiven for, so I need to let that go.
So does forgiveness mean to forgive?
No. And I think he kinda, he covered that here because he said, "Protect yourself." At some point, cause I had to leave the room. But at some point, he says something about, basically, being on the lookout so that they don't do it again. You know what I'm saying? I had a Sunday school teacher that, one of my favorite ones, I talk about a lot. Brother Howard taught, he taught us a long time ago. He said, "Man, forgive but never forget." I'm like, "How can you forgive?" I thought those were ahead of him. He said, "Dude, if you forgive somebody, but you forget what they did, what's gonna stop them from doing it again?" Just because you forgive them don't mean that they change. So you need to be aware. So, no, I don't think, I don't think you have to forget, but you have to be able to let that, that emotion, that emotion go. That's why in one of the pieces in here, he talks about selflessness. Because a lot of times, you know, cause I could argue the point about the self, but our personhood, we feel our person has been damaged. So a lot of times that'll stop us from being open to what the universe got to give us. You know what I'm saying? My pride. You know what I'm saying? You done hurt my pride. You embarrassed me. You done, you done stole from me. It's the principle. Yeah, and we done heard that one. It ain't, it ain't what they did, it's the principle. How many of us got people in our family in jail right now because they standing on principles that they don't even practice? You know, cause it's about the principle of the matter, you know? Anything else before we move on?
I like how he talked about we are the tools and how we get repaired and stuff. Remember at Simi Camp, that one act got broken, but we put it back together and still use it. So you get broken, you get fixed, they use it all over again. And then you get old and you die away, they put that tool away. But it still leaves behind the works that are done.
Right. Now, I remember in there, he said, "The good tools." You know what I'm saying? Those tools worth saving, we save. Those that are not, we discard them. So we gotta make sure that we good tools. If we, if we claiming this, if we claiming hip-hop, if we claiming what we are, we gotta be good at what we do. You know what I'm saying? So let's go and move on to the next one unless somebody else got something they, something else they wanna point out. We on Perform Patience. Anybody wanna read that?
Number six, Perform Patience. Practice expressing calm endurance, silent strength, and inner resolve. These lead to patience. Be tolerant of others and their views and always be willing to wait. Whatever is yours is yours by divine right. Within the spiritual life, there's a very little need to rush or to be anxious. Simply ask and then wait in it, expecting manner. Usually what you do not receive is for your own good. Here, patience is the ability to be still and allow opportunity to fall in your lap. Do not run after opportunity. Only position yourself to receive opportunities. Usually it is the righteous that remain still through the changes of the world in a strategic position. So that when the world unexpectedly changes again, opportunity falls in their laps. Remember that opportunity is not to be chased down, it is to be searched for. Opportunity is not to be hunted, it is granted. It is not taken, it is received. Hip-hoppers are encouraged to find strength in these things and the things they already have. Be patient, even with ignorant selfish people. Be patient with them as well as with yourself and prepare for the fall of the ignorant. It is inevitable. Sometimes the fall of ignorant will temporarily hinder the rise of hip-hop. In this case, the tune hip-hop has already prepared for inevitable fall of the ignorant through independence and a variety of divine performances and rises while others are trapped under their own rubble. In all things, perform patience, even with difficult people, be patient. No matter how ignorant and inconsiderate people may appear to be, always remember that ultimately, everyone is growing, learning, developing according to their own level of consciousness. And if they are not, then they will not be around you much longer. Be patient. Some people will simply not see it your way. Be patient. You and they are always growing. Eventually, everyone sees the truth. However, everyone grows at their own pace. What is obvious to you today may not be so obvious to others. But if you stand in truth and in righteous humility, they shall eventually see what you see. Be patient. Everyone arrives at truth eventually. Finally, we must continue practice of being patient with others. Let us remain committed to our principles, performances, and disciplines, but let us not be too anxious to receive spiritual insight and power. All shall come in time. For we have seen for over forty years, that is not matter, matter how much meditation one does or how virtues one may live, spiritual insight and power happen on their own, in their own time. You simply must continue your practice until you are granted the results that you desire. Be patient and learn the art of waiting. The spiritual life is not the material life. It moves within its own time. When you are being delayed for some trivial reason, do not get upset or worried. Simply go with the flow. Go with the flow because your, your very steps are counted and guided by spiritual forces. Be patient. Be willing to wait. Practice performing patience while waiting in line. Patient, practice patience with difficult people. Practice patience with your own spiritual development, with your career, with your children, with your parents. In all areas of life, learn how to apply the virtues, performance of patience. Many disasters have been avoided and many have come to see the light by the correct use of patience. As the philosopher Carly...
Carlisle.
Carlisle once said, "Every mobile work is at first impossible." Perform patience.
I wanted to go back. One step, it was something, on performing forgiveness. Remember, an act that you may have perceived as evil may have turned out to be a blessing in disguise. Now, this is with the forgiveness, but also that's with patience too. Cause a lot of times, I mean, I don't know if anybody ever had something that they really wanted to do, but for, for some reason, it seemed like everything in the universe was trying to block you from getting it. And when you practice the forgiveness and when you practice patience, you eventually find out why, or something messed up happens to you. And you end up, cause I think we kinda covered that last week, so maybe we... Anybody in this sound familiar? Did we do this last week?
No, we did this last week, but it was like, we talked about it.
So, in, in performing patience, anything that stuck out before we move on?
This segment talked about somewhat, to me, it corresponds to our meeting prior to this in a big way. I mean, I just see so many things connecting and see the manifestation through patience, even through different formulations of what we're trying to do. And just getting to the right people, you know? Because if you weren't patient, patient, one could say, "Forget this." Or like we said last week, or what was discussed, what is this for?
Right.
You know, and watching things pop up and then they fail because it's set aside for the righteous.
I have something to say about doing bullshit. I had an experience where I was kinda like anxious for, I was anxious. Anxious for, you know, all these events to happen. But then, you know, they weren't quite happening fast enough. So once I sat back and looked, I was able to pay better attention. And once I paid better attention, that gave me the concept like, okay, be patient, let things flow. Instead of trying to make it happen, let's see how it's supposed to happen. You know what I'm saying? Instead of trying to, because like we're saying, it may not be meant to be, you know? And then when you, when you find out that you didn't make that, you know, didn't make that to where you were supposed to be, then it's like, what's a good thing you didn't do? Cause such, such happened. You know what I'm saying? So it could be a blessing in disguise type thing is, is like really coming to be like... And they're not, they're out of my way for a reason. Because if they were in my life, it would be a distraction, you know? So I'm like, when I got that concept, like, you know, I want this, I want this, but come to find out, it's a distraction. I'm like, okay, I need to work with that and get to, get to my focus and my goal. So yes, be patient so you can see what it is that's really meant for you.
So you could really, you say that again, be patient so you can...
Really see what's really meant for you.
Man. Man. Cause I know, I know several instances personally where if I would have rested to something, I wouldn't be sitting at this table. You know what I'm saying? If I would have, patience, patience and wisdom go hand in hand. You know what I'm saying? Cause something, I mean, cause, and then, and this should be something that we all take away from this. When you dealing with some, some of your relations, as Native Americans say, those individuals that always come at you with stuff that need to be done right away, you might need to get them out your life. Cause all of us got those urgent emergency people in our lives and they always want you to make a decision right then. But sometime you need to sit and see how things turn out before you jump all the way in. Our ancestors say, "Only a fool tests the depths of..." Only a fool tests the depths of water with both feet. You know what I'm saying? A lot of times, that's what a lot of us doing. We jumping in with both feet and thinking that we gonna land on, because it's close to shore, it's not deep. But a lot of times we end up jumping into something that we're not really prepared for. You know what I'm saying? Or I mean, cause I could think about, if I would, if I would be... Now, let me go, let me go back to this. Patience. It's funny how the world paint pictures of places we should, we are supposed to be at a certain time in our life. I be watching these shows and I'm older than most people here. Well, I don't think I'm older than all of y'all. But I'm listening to some of these shows and then, you know, I don't know if y'all noticed, but a lot of these families on TV, especially the white ones, where everything is going good and successful, we talking about individuals who have been married, have a house, have a car, have three kids and they thirty-three years old. Where is that happening at? And then you start looking at that and you start thinking, "Oh, man, I'm behind." So we start rushing and we start making, making bad decisions because we think that we're supposed to be somewhere when it's almost impossible for anybody to be where we're being told we should be. So, I'm sorry. Anything else?
When he said, "Usually what you do not receive is for your own good." Here, patience is the ability to be still, allow opportunities to fall in your lap. I mean, when I came to the meeting like a couple of weeks ago or probably a month ago, you was like, "Y'all, so you just chilling, you just sitting back, you not doing nothing?" And that's what I was doing. I was chilling back and not doing nothing, being patient. And then I finally got up.
Calling me on the carpet.
I finally got up and went to go do it and then out of nowhere, that opportunity fell in my lap. And then, I've been being patient for a mentor and like an older person for a long time and I don't know where I start coming to these studies. And then I went to Simi Camp and made history, so patience is virtue.
Anything else?
Just how he, at the end of the chapter, he made the statement, "The correct use of patience."
Right.
Because I am one who can't, or couldn't stand, I'm dealing with patience. And maybe it's the correct use of it. Because to me, our work and let this process, patience meant staying, you know, with that shit on your head. You know, just staying there, but...
Always remember that. Because if it cuts one way, it cuts the other way. So, too much of one, as my brother Mazi did tell to say, "Too much of one thing, good for nothing." So you, we can use being patient as a cop-out when we know and everybody else around us can see, you need to be taking action. Same thing with forgiveness. You know what I'm saying? Forgiveness is good, but it can be a cop-out and be bad for you too. So we, like you said, all these, we got to move in them using my eye. Truth, justice, righteousness, reciprocity, balance, order, and harmony. And ask ourselves, how, and the way that I'm practicing this principle, will it bring my eye into my life? Am I reflecting my eye? Am I practicing balance? Am I just in my decision? Is this based on truth? You know what I'm saying? Because you know, when we really start inquiring into what we doing, it kinda allows us to eliminate some of the emotions, some of the fears, and eliminate a lot... to eliminate some of the emotions, some of the fears, and eliminate a lot of the garbage so that we could really see what, how we should be using patience. Because you know, we, we all know people that are, that are patients, are patient to a fault. You know what I'm saying, they will sit and not do nothing and won't ever do nothing, and it's like, what are you waiting for?
They are stagnant within their patience.
Right, they, you know, they, they have, they have become, as she says, stagnant with their patience. You know what I'm saying, we know what happens to stagnant water. It's, it gets, it gets, it gets rancid, it becomes poisonous. It becomes poisonous, it's undrinkable for us. You know what I'm saying? So, or it turns to wine. It's five? Alright, um, so y'all want to stop here? Or y'all want to read one more? Consensus, what's up? Yes, no, maybe, what?
Sure.
Huh?
One more.
Alright, perform charity, somebody pick that up.
Be of a giving nature, be of service to the progression of life itself, perform charity often, and do not concern yourself with whether your giving shall be returned to you. Give for the sake of giving, give of your talent as freely as God has given it to you. Freely giving away samples of one's talent actually opens unexpected doors for the giver and for the receiver. Give of yourself, give opportunity, give knowledge, give time, give money and other resources. Charity actually relieves human suffering, be willing to forgive the debt of those who owe you. Through your own actions, be the example to society as to what charity looks like. Do not attach yourself to anything, all that you have should be able to be given away in a second's notice. The ones you love, I mean, the ones who give never loses, the one who owns nothing cannot experience death, loss, foreclosure, seizure or confiscation. Charity also proves the wealth of an individual, even if that individual has little or no money. Only a wealthy mentality, even with little money, can freely give, and likewise, only a poor mentality, even with an abundance of money, have nothing to give. If it is wealth, which includes money that you seek, it is very important that you act wealthy first through charity. Seek to perform charity in public and in private, charity raises your self-worth. Public charity sets a good example within your community, and private charity sets patience with those who are, uh, they are not. Oh, good examples before your God. Find ways to perform charity, but also be careful not to make those who are charitable toward dependent upon you. Give with the intention of relieving one's suffering, sometimes a free gift can prolong one's suffering and/or prevent one from learning a much needed lesson. So remember, as you seek to help and assist people, always remember that everyone is where they are for a reason. We have found that some people are actually where they need to be in life regardless of how impoverished and or dangerous their circumstances may seem to be. God is engaging us all. At all times, we must walk and talk with a giving heart, but if a person is not willing, is not also willing to help himself, there is little that anyone can do for such an individual. Therefore, be wise in your giving, give with the intention to truly help and empower. Sometimes the giving of nothing is the greatest gift of all, perform your charity.
Sometimes giving nothing is the greatest gift of all, I'm gonna practice that one on Christmas. Uh, anybody want to comment on charity?
I do.
Go ahead.
This one spoke to me specifically, especially, um, when he said, um, do not attach yourself to anything, and then, um, the find ways to perform charity, but also be careful not to, um, make those who are charitable toward, uh, dependent upon you. Um, that one spoke to me specifically because, um, I'm not, um, I don't have a addictive personality, I don't, um, too much attach myself to people or anything, um, so that I'm not dependent, but, um, I do have a very giving personality and I've, I've ran in such, into situations where, um, people do become dependent on me, and so- It's, it's almost damaging to some people because when you, when you have a person that's latched on to you, who has a codependent personality, you know, it, it, it kind of hinders them to a fault, you know what I'm saying, and then you have to look at yourself like, well damn, is it my fault because, you know, but I don't know, I'm sorry.
No, but though-
I agree, I mean, I can relate a little bit. Um, but it is, I have two things I want to, um, address. The first one is, um, in it again, it talks about, um, being of a giving nature and how, how, um, how much of a blessing you give from that. Um, I, I have a lot of cousins, so I have another cousin who, um, I remember once in her life where she didn't work for years, she just had little kids and she took care of her little kids, but because when she did have something, she was able to give or, you know, even just going into the store and the Santa Claus was there for the charity newsies, you know, so she'll just, you know, put a dollar in, or even somebody just need, saying they need a sound, she'll give, you know what I'm saying, I watched her do it. And in return, she didn't have it to give, but she gave when, whenever the circumstance of, um, arou- arose, but everything still got paid, she was still taken care of, she was still blessed, you know, and I've always admired that about her, because, you know, she wasn't, she didn't hope, righteous, you know, so she didn't have any kind of selfishness about her, you know what I'm saying, but in, but she was in, she didn't have this job or anything in here, you know, so I could say, I'm out working and still having all these hard times where she didn't work and was still able to make it and maintain, I admire her for that. So, that, that's an example of how you can be charitable and the blessings come. The other thing was just like, um, just like, uh, a fool was, a fool was saying about, you know, not letting it be dependent, letting the charity, like you could be giving, but don't let it start, you starting to be the dependent of that, you know, so like they, they are depending on you. And what I've gotten from that is, I mean, I could be giving and helpful and so forth until I get to feeling like I'm being used, then it's time for me to back up and then I'm acting funny, so I, my mom told me a long time ago, when you're acting funny, you must be doing something right, so.
But again, like with, with, where, where that's concerned, like if you're, if you're giving to a fault in that person, or the situation is dependent on your giving and you reach a certain point where you're, you can no longer give, at that point, it's like, okay, this thing right here is solely dependent on me being able to do X, Y and Z. If I can no longer provide that, that's where, you know, that hindrance comes, it's like, okay, you know, eh, give, but make sure that understanding is there, okay, I can do X, Y and Z, but you need to work on this.
Right.
Because if you don't work on this and become dependent, you know, of, of, become independent of your dependence on me- then this right here that you need provided, if I can no longer provide that to you, what are you gonna do?
Right.
So those conversations need to be had within those specific situations because, you know, man, I've, I've-
Yes, I've had more than one experience like that, so yes, I, I understand.
I mean, a lot of times in our giving, like you says, we damage people. We want to be helpful to them, but in fact, we're not doing nothing but enabling them to be continued doing the same stuff that they've been doing. So in our charity, we have to be very, very conscious about what we giving, like for example, when people ask me for bill money, I can't, for some, for, I have never been able to be comfortable to give somebody some money for bills. You understand what I'm saying? Because they just gonna be back. You know what I'm saying, we can fend them off for this thirty days, but they always gonna come back. You know what I'm saying, so I have people that be mad at me about that, and that's okay, you can, you just, don't touch me, just, you know what I'm saying, stay in your little corner and be upset. Um, but, um, we hinder people sometime with our charity, so we have to be, we have to be mindful of that, I mean, we have to really, eh, and sometime we become damaging to ourselves by accepting charity, um, that we allowed to form into a dependence. Our, our ancestors say this, they say, learn to tell the difference between a gift and a bribe, because some, some, I mean, because part of some, some people's game is what? I get you dependent on me. Right, you know what I'm saying, I pull you in, I lured you in, now you that bitch, you know what I'm saying? Become dependent on them, now all of a sudden, they stop, so now you got to grovel to them or you got to stand up on your own too. Um, anybody else before we go on to close out? No? Alright.
Go ahead, Will. About the years, I have a lot of clo- I had a lot of clothes and I've been terri- charity to my two younger cousins, and I've seen like that my clothes have been restored, like every time I gave, like, like a couple of weeks ago, I gave like two loads of bags of clothes, and I seen by time clothes is coming back, so I don't worry about that. When he said, when you give charity and not expect nothing to come back, it comes back.
Right, it just, I mean, that opens, because we, we talk about being a spiritual people, but we play games with spirituality. Um, we don't really believe in the principles, I, I'm, I'm speaking, let me speak for me. Sometime I find that I have noticed- reciprocity, because we have did A, B and C, D, E and F has transpired for us, but we, for some reason, we can't make that spiritual connection. You know what I'm saying, when we start practicing stuff like that, and we start noticing that, and that takes a, a special eye to be open in order to see when your giving is returned because you, you know what I'm saying, you were able to connect it back, so we got to learn to get those eyes so that we could see when things are happening, um, um, because of other actions that we have taken. You know what I'm saying, so that we can build up our faith, because now you, at a young age, you are developing, um, you are developing eyesight to see reciprocity in motion. So now, extend that to your art, extend that to everything else that you doing so that you, because since you know it works, you got faith in it, start using it, and that's how we become po- more powerful by using our principles. So now, um, anybody want to say any goodbyes, any announcements for anybody out there listening? Feel free to tweet this and reshare this, um, we want one of these to go viral. So, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna close out, I think this is gonna be Brother Malik from Spirit.
We should be reaching for Orion, instead we have a love affair with Dine, getting drunk till we fold, then dough till we float, does the superficial high suffice for the lows? No time for idle, introspection and life lessons are everyone's Quran, Torah, Bible. Gluttonous eats, defeats, the true purpose of eats, the temple falls off on foreign chemicals, toxins and meats, you call food and rich when it's stripped of nutrients and bleach. I'm not meant to be reached when flesh tone Band-Aids are peach, every native slash European contract was breached, what will eponics do for the disenfranchised? Mumiya gets no justice because Mumiya is despised, reverse discrimination versus racism will never be tied, English the bastard language of the not so civilized, the gift of spliced tongues is what the Western language is, so isn't broken English like a double negative, yo, yo, hey.
Hey, yo, hey, yo, hey, yo, hey.
I go.
Amen.
I go.
Amen.
Hey, yo, hey, yo, hey, yo, hey.
Hey, yo, hey, yo, hey, yo, hey.
Yo, hey, yo, hey, yo, hey.
Hey, yo, hey, yo, hey, yo, hey.
Hey, yo, la, yo, hey.
Hey, yo, 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 hey.
Mr. Diddy. Thanks for tuning in to, um, Warrior Training Session, um, where we're going, this is an adult study group, um, like thanks for tuning in to Gianni Journey Radio. This is a Heart of a Simba Productions. Where we strive to blow up your old paradigm.